Agenda? No. Who would like to adopt the agenda? Amela? All those in favor? It is carried. Are there any corrections or amendments to the September 16th, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? No, look good. Okay. Would anybody like to adopt the September 16th, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes?
I'll move adoption, Madam Mayor.
Tom, thank you for that. All those in favor? Bill, are you? Thank you. Carried? Okay, moving along. We'll move right into our proclamations. And we will start with the first one, which is Waste Reduction Week, October 19th to the 25th, 2020. Whereas Drayton Valley, as a municipality, is committed to sustainability and we recognize that a sustainable community is one that is economically, environmentally, and socially healthy and resilient, and meets challenges through integrated solutions. Where a sustainable community manages human, natural, and financial resources to meet current needs while being mindful of and responsible for the future. Whereas Drayton Valley, as a municipality, is committed to reducing our waste, conserving resources, and educating our community about sustainable living. Whereas we recognize the generation of solid waste and the needless waste of resources as global environmental problems, and endeavor to take the lead in our community toward environmental sustainability. Whereas we recognize the growing concern of responsible consumption and the need to reduce waste and increase reuse and recycling. Therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Nancy Dodds, on behalf of the Council of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim October 19th to the 25th of 2020 as Waste Reduction Week in the Town of Drayton Valley. And our second proclamation is World Polio Day, October 24th, 2020. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. Whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Whereas Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus, and in 1988, helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative to immunize the children of the world against polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. Whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.1 billion US dollars and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. Whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. Whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. Whereas over 1.2 million Rotary members in more than 35,000 clubs across the world sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Nancy Dodds, on behalf of the Council of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2020, as World Polio Day in the Town of Drayton Valley, and encourage all citizens to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Okay, and moving right into our delegations, we'll start first with the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley. So if you want to just come right up? Uh, no, Doug's not here yet. So we'll just wait.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here.
Good morning.
You took half my speech. We are, Rotary was the world's first service club, first organization. First happened in Chicago in 1905. Paul Harris decided that he needed to have a professional club that had the same friendly spirit and attitude that he felt in the small town of his youth. And since then, it has grown globally. First internationally into Winnipeg, Canada, was the first international club. And again, as you said, 1.2 million Rotarians across the world and over 32,000 clubs today. So that's a little bit about Rotary. And what we're here to talk about is polio. So what is polio? Poliomyitis, or polio, is a paralyzing and potentially failed disease, and it still threatens children in some parts of the world. It invades the nervous system and can cause total paralysis within hours. It can strike people of any age, but usually it strikes children that are under five years of age. And it can't be prevented. It cannot be prevented. Sorry. It can be prevented by vaccine, but it's not curable. So it's something that there is no cure for, but there is a vaccine. But unlike most diseases, it can be eradicated. And so that's what we're working towards that end. And a lot of the, a lot of the effort from polio over the last 30 years, as you said, with our global partnership to the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, it's not just the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. We also work with WHO, with UNICEF, and with Centers for Disease Control in that eradication effort. And there are only two countries left. That's Afghanistan and Pakistan. So we're working on it, and like you say, 99.9% is done. But the infrastructure that we've built and helped to build to end polio, it's also being used against threats of other diseases, including COVID-19. So our tracing, our contact tracing efforts and the mobilization efforts that we have in place for polio also can be used in instances like COVID-19, and helping to, you know, do the contact tracing and containment and that kind of stuff. So. You've already heard all the rest of them. As a result of Rotary's commitment to this effort, a lot of our local members have taken the initiative to participate in what's called National Immunization Day. We took the effort to go to India, and where we were offered a National Immunization Day package, tour package, I guess you would call it, but a participation package. So we blended our own expenses, Jeanette and I, and some others, but on different trips. So I'm going to let Jeanette talk to you a little bit about her trip, and then I'll speak again.
Yeah, well, this, this is what I heard you just speak in, 1988, when we started the GPEI, where polio was in the world. And the latest slide I have is 2018, which still shows Nigeria, which has now been polio-free, and all of Africa has been declared polio-free. So that's a big step forward.
It was 2013, I had the privilege to travel to India for National Immunization Day. And my group consisted of 42 Rotarians from across Canada and the United States. At that time, there were many Rotarians from across the globe, assigned to various parts of India. We worked out of New Delhi, and I was posted to a small town north of New Delhi called Sonapat. At that time, there were 200, 2,500,000 vaccinations. There were 155 supervisors, who basically helped us through various modes of transportation. There were 209 million homes visited, and there were 174 million children immunized in one national immunization trip. This is a picture of the delegation from Drayton Valley, which is Elaine Tambeline, Julie Mulligan, and myself. I have to say at this time that Rotarians were very well advertised, and our visits were welcomed by all involved. Everywhere we went, there were banners announcing the Immunization Day by Rotarians. So it was no secret there at all. Again, it was, I was assigned to a bus steeple in Sonapat. There, there we kept all the children coming off the bus. It was important that all children five years and under were given two drops, and then they were, then we colored their little pinky purple. Mothers would see us and run to us with their babies because they wanted them back, they wanted to receive the vaccine. When we visited residential areas, we would then mark the houses with the number and the date of vaccine so that they would be identified as having been there. It was also very difficult traveling through some areas, through mud and cattle, and you never knew what you were going to come to. Tented areas were challenging, and we would then mark the tent flaps identifying we had been there. It's a challenge. We also visited, had the opportunity to visit St. Stephen's Hospital, where they did constructive surgery on the polio victims. We saw many embraces and different types of harnesses as treatment for this disease. The doctors at the hospital are highly regarded and have people come from all over the world for their expertise for this treatment. We also visited the Artificial Limb Center in Jappur. There, I witnessed a young man, about 17, who walked in with crutches, and he had lost his leg from the hip down. He was able to be fitted with an artificial limb and that was strapped to him, and he walked out with even a limp. Changed his life, and he had a big smile on his face.
When I went, it was actually 2011. That was the, I was one of the first ones to go over from our district and from our area. We had a very small Canadian contingent, 23 of us, two from Alberta and one from Ontario. And the rest were mostly from the United States, but also from around the world. And we had a wonderful experience there. As Jeanette was saying, that Rotary is well advertised. The day before the National Immunization Day, they have what's called a Social Mobilization Day. And what is it? It's an awareness day to build awareness for the National Immunization Day. I was stationed in Gazebad, which is a suburb of Delhi. And it's a huge city, actually, but it's called a small suburb for them. But we, what we did was we had a parade through the streets of Gazebad. And we had the workers that you see beside me there, those are the UNICEF and the Community Healthcare Workers. We had schoolchildren, they had banners, we had bands, we had all kinds of manner of noise makers and people. And we actually walked the streets of Gazebad, announcing the National Immunization Day the next day, and building awareness. And the young man that's standing beside me there is a polio victim, a polio survivor. And he was front and center in our parade and making sure that people were, that this is a good thing to go and get your children immunized. So the reason that we were there, of course, we got to see a lot of sites, but the reason that we were there was to immunize children against polio. And with those two drops, and then putting the little purple pinky on their fingers, we made a huge difference in their lives, and we made a big change. And our hope is that every child in the world will be able to get a purple pinky, because that's the only way that we can ensure that this disease is going to be eradicated. Polio is just a plane ride away from us. Really, it's only a plane ride away. And as long as there's polio in the world, it can start up again and be just as devastating as COVID. So this is something that we need to get done. We only have two countries left, and the cases are going down exponentially every year. We're hoping to have this eradicated in just a few years. And so one of the ways that we can do that is through your generous donations. And as you can see here, we have a little bit of a box, and we're asking through this tumultuous year of 2020, that everybody that is able to could donate $20.20 towards the eradication of polio. And also, the other way to help is through building awareness. And so we thank the Town of Drayton Valley very much for proclaiming World Polio Day in Drayton Valley. And we hope that we don't, in the near future, ever have to worry about the purple pinkies again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for that, and thank you for bringing, bringing this all with us today and sharing everything. I think there's a lot of information that people don't know, and people don't really understand that, you know, that there still is polio in the world, and that, you know, it would be lovely to have it completely eradicated, for sure. Will you leave that box here at the?
Yes, we will.
At the town? Okay, are there any?
I'll leave a purple marker, too.
Are there any questions? Any questions from council?
Keep it going.
No, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for the hard work that you do in the community and in the world. Okay, so I think what we'll do is we're going to jump to 6.4, the Drayton Valley Municipal Library. Doug and Lindara are here. Lindara has an appointment today, so if you want to come up and start your delegation. If you want to maybe sit beside Winston here, that might be a little bit easier for you, maybe? We can just pull up another chair, even? Oh, you're going to stand? You've got to put the 20 cents in, Doug.
I know, you're going to chase me down. Thanks. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Our chair and our treasurer are here as well to support this proposal that council should be well aware of what we're looking at. Some years ago, when I arrived here, there was a motion, well, not a motion, there was a movement towards reducing our appropriation requests from councils.
Can I just get you to stop for one second?
Yes, sorry, Doug, I don't mean to cut you off. So Winston, is it, is it okay if I'm here for the discussion? I don't, I know we're not making a decision or anything on this item. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead, continue.
So if the motion is, or the movement is towards combining both libraries under one roof to reduce our overhead costs and our appropriation requests from councils, then the board has been in support of that, and we're just looking for a solution that will work. We looked at two facilities within the past year. A letter was sent to town and county councils to outline the findings of that committee. The committee included Lindara, Pat Adamson, Rose Mayen, our vice chair, myself, Donna Wiltse, and Nancy Dodds, yourself. So we looked at the two facilities that were on, proposed as potential sites for us to move into, one being the United Church, and the other being the old Sears Building. Where the assessment that we leveled on a playing field here had a scoring system that was equally assessed for both locations. Were the, was the facility centrally located? Does everyone have a copy of the letter that I sent? Okay. So the location is central. Does it have the required square footage for both library collections, programs, activities, social space? And the available parking? That's important. Accessibility for people with mobility restrictions? Sustainability for the library operation? Security and risk management? Doesn't have the proper security to be able to manage the facility? Interlibrary delivery? So is there a way to actually receive our materials coming in and going out? The appearance of the facility? The library naming? The zoning and the permits that would be required? Purchase versus lease? Renovation costs? Maintenance and utility costs? Relocation of the super net cost? And other considerations? So as we went through and we graded these, our final score showed that the Sears outlet, the old Sears Building, was a better location. It had more to offer in terms of versatility. It could potentially reduce some operational costs in, in that supervision of the space was more ideal for a large, open area where we can see down the entire length of the building and make sure that everything is following the rules of operation. That last one, the security and the supervision, that was a big issue with the Rotary Church. And as I mentioned in my last presentation to council last week, I don't know that it was very, very blatantly stated that if the United Church was to be looked at seriously, it would actually result in our having to hire more staff to properly supervise three different levels. So in terms of the purchase versus lease for the Sears Building, that was the, that's a big decision for this council, because the lease option was not affordable. So I'm going to let Lynn speak to the other.
Thank you, council, for accepting our delegation today. I have to say that the sheet that I passed out, we got this information last night, and I have to thank Councilor Bill Ballas for helping us in getting some of these numbers together for us. But our proposal for merging the two libraries, both Rotary and the municipal, into one library, has been ongoing for probably about a year and a half to two years. And what we want to do is to combine the libraries, reduce overhead, reduce costs, so that we won't be coming to council with increased delegations, or sorry, increased appropriations all the time. So this option that we have here of purchasing the United, not the United Church, sorry, purchasing the Sears Building actually ends up with a very, either a very, very minimal cost, or in fact, it could be, we could be actually increasing our revenue and so reducing our allocation request. So the building, the Sears Building, contains the old Sears store, the Anytime Fitness Building, the former dance studio, and it's all owned by Mo Hamden. And he is willing to sell the building, which is a big step for us, that he is willing to do this. And also, he is also willing to sign a 10-year lease for the Anytime Fitness. So that gives us some stability there. And, and he was signing that for $10 per square foot, and they have 8,000 square feet there. So they're following our estimate figures, pending a building inspection and everything. But we, we know the Sears Building is 22,500 square feet, so it's a fairly large space. Anytime Fitness is 8,000 square feet, and this leaves us 14,500 square feet for the library and for any offices we might want to bring in. The estimated purchase price of the Sears Building is $2 million. However, the naming rights, he's also, he's agreed to a naming right of $500,000, a half a million dollars. So that reduces the cost of the building to 1.5 million. If we then add in the estimate that we've had of $350,000 for the renovations required to make it usable for a library, that brings the grand total down to 1.85 million. That sounds like a lot of money. But if we take out, or if you take out a debenture for 30 years at 2.165, and that was the going rate at the time these numbers were pulled together, I understand it has now come down, which is even better, but that would work out to $6,992 a month. The bonus part of this is because of the lease agreement with Anytime Fitness, their cost per month is $6,667, leaving a net cost to the town of $325, which I think is an affordable amount per month for that building. And these figures have been vetted, I understand, by Clayton and by Alvera in your Treasury Department. Also, looking at this building, there are some potential revenue streams, which could include renting out either one or both spaces beside the Anytime Fitness Studio. This could be done to other council boards, for example, FCSS may want to move into a new place. Or we could lease out to any appropriate businesses that would build up a library or sort of combined with a library would be appropriate for that space. And this could be such as a coffee shop or a Wi-Fi cafe, which would be a nice thing, I think, to have in. I think everybody would like to have a Starbucks or something like that here. So this actually could result in a net reduction of the library budget, an appropriation request from the town council at this time, because any revenue stream that we would get in would, of course, come off the appropriation request. So at this time, we respectively ask the council to refer this proposal to the Treasury Department to determine the true costs and the feasibility of this proposal. And once determined it is feasible, because we truly believe it is, we ask that you move forward with all due speed to procure the Sears Building for a new combined library. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Bill?
Yeah, thank you. Could we have just Alvera speak on, from Treasury?
Sure, I mean, Lynn went over everything quite in quite detail. Interest rates came down 0.2%, so I'd say, at least all the numbers are fairly similar. And the only thing I would add to that is that the current debenture for the Rotary House is expiring in 2028. And so if we went ahead with this in the next three years, then the Anytime Fitness lease would expire, it would be a 10-year lease, correct? So that would expire in 2031. If we started in 2021, or in the next three years, then the Anytime Fitness lease would cover essentially the Rotary House debenture payments, so that's.
You mean the Rotary Children's Library?
Our, sorry, yes, the Rotary Library. And then, and another thing you didn't note in your breakdown is that that space could also be leased, and for Doug, it's probably going to be leased to the school. And so any revenue coming in there would reduce your costs as well, so.
And the estimate for the Rotary Children's Library space being used by Star Catholic would be about $24,000 per year, from what I remember in our discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I, we thought we weren't sure exactly what the amount was. I didn't know that we came up with the exact amount, but that would reduce, so I have an additional cost of about $10,000 a year right now, and so that 24 would come off, so you would be in a better position going forward. Any, the $10,000 is not considering what you would be making of lease, any lease revenue other than Anytime Fitness.
Tom?
Well, I, I think the numbers speak for themselves. I think they're, I think we, of course, the presentation is then sending it to Treasury to, to really look at and dial it down so that when we enter into our budget discussions, and that, that we all have an opportunity to speak to. So I look forward to that. The, the only thing that, that's, it's sort of the fly in the ointment, if I might, is that we have a joint agreement with the County of Brazu, which is, is up and down these days. And so I'm not sure how we would, you know, continue those discussions. I think, Councilor Ballas, you've, you're sort of to the point where, okay, we're done discussions, let's, let's move on, let's make some decisions. And I, I agree with you. Although the partner in question, we do need to spend time and, and sit down with them, I, I know that you, as a library board, have gone to the County of Brazu, and I'm not sure the position they're taking. I know the position they're taking on recreation, and it's, it's, it's not good. So I'm just really making a statement that we were, we're heading into some budget discussions, and I hope that we can make a decision as opposed to letting you, you know, we're, we're not waffling, we just have a lot of things to think about. Thanks.
Yeah, just to give a bit of a background for everybody in the audience here, is that one of the things I think, which came out of joint council was to task the library board, when they had brought the budget to us, was to either stay at status quo or below. So it was that long-term planning, we wanted to see sustainability, we wanted to see reductions of costs. I would think, I would say that the consensus around the room was that we felt that a community this size didn't need two libraries, and currently we have two libraries, so we, that was one of the things that was tasked. I also sit on the library board, like Lindara had said, and that was one of the things that the library board was tasked with, is how to get those costs down, how to see if it's possible to put those two libraries into one with still having the ability to have the programming and things like that. So that's where the library board had gone out, and they had looked at options. Options were presented of, maybe it would be more feasible to look at another location, something that would be cost-effective, long-term, have the space that would be able to have for the programs and fit every, all the books and everything that they have now, combining the two and not having, or combining the two into one and not having the two libraries. So I think that's why you're presenting here today, and thank you for that. I know that this is a new proposal that you came with today, that the initial proposal, I don't know if the rest of the board knows about the new proposal that's on the table as of today, because like you had said, originally, the, the previous proposal was for the Sears Building to lease that, and then the United Church, and then that's what was voted on. The entire board voted on that. So this is new, so I think that if you haven't already, I think that the board members would all need to know that this is the new proposal that also is. all need to know that this is the new proposal that also is out on the table, just so everybody's kept in the loop. And then also, are you presenting to joint councils on Thursday as well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just like Tom said, then that gives the opportunity for both, because we share those, a lot of the costs and everything with the, the county as well, right? So then they can hear of why and, and see the numbers and everything that which makes sense and which is going to be the most cost-effective and cost-saving, because that's what it boils down to, is, is putting the two libraries into one, and for long-term, what, what is going to be the most cost-effective saving in the end.
Bill?
Is all your board members aware of your presentation?
Of the presentation? Not everyone is aware of the presentation. However, of the assessment, the entire board is aware of it. And in regards to the lease versus purchase option, we didn't have those details at the time, but the board had discussed, well, what would be the cost? Would it be better to pursue the, the Sears building if we knew the, the numbers for purchase? But the board cannot make the purchase, that's got to be done through councils. So at this point, yes, the board is aware that there would be an option for purchase, but they didn't know the details, and I will send that out as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Farrell?
Yeah, um, I think for me, the only piece out is, looking at it as a one-off looks great, like the numbers work and, and that's easy for us. I think sometimes as town council, though, ultimately, we're still taking out a $1.8 million debenture, which goes against our borrowing, and for us, we have so many projects and other pieces that we all have to fit in together, that sometimes decisions don't happen as quickly and as easily, just because of that. As a one-off, yes, great, but looking at everything, we still have to fit it all in. So, thank you for coming.
Okay, if there's no other questions then? Thank you very much, and yeah, we have some heavy thinking ahead of us with budget coming up, and yeah, thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Are, are there any bits of information that town council requires for us to produce prior to you being able to move forward with your deliberations in budgeting?
No, no, I think that we have everything. It's just, like Farrell had said too, right, there is that still, we have to consider that there is, you know, budget implications, there is the debenture and things like that, but we also have to look at that long-term. I mean, having, you know, the option of the, the two buildings there, there's the, right now, there's the proposal on the table of the Sears building and the, the church. Both would be beautiful and fantastic facilities. The Sears building would make a fantastic location, and we'd have the opportunity to bring the downtown back to life, to create that arts and culture that we've talked about, and that revitalization. Turning an old church into a library also would be beautiful. When we were at FCM in Quebec, we had the opportunity of seeing a church that was converted into a library, and it was absolutely beautiful. But then maybe there's also potential for other buildings, there's other empty buildings in the downtown core, you know, and I think that we have to look at fair market value, we have to look what's out there, we have to look at, we have to look at and consider a lot of options. So I think that as a council, this council and probably the Brazos County, we have to weigh all those options, weigh the costs, and look at what's going to be the best long-term decision for the community and for, you know, the pocketbook as well. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
If I could just add one thought, just for your information, I think the naming rights of the $500,000 are off the table if we do not use the Sears building.
Oh, okay, thank you for that.
That's just another piece of information.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, wonderful, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to 6.2, Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association. Jerry, I believe you are here and ready?
Hey, I'd like, thank you for having us here. I'm Jerry Griner from the Pembina Regional Aerodrome Association, and Corey Howlett, President and Vice President of the Association. We took over operation of the airport in March, just before COVID hit, which put lots of little, you know, lots of things we would like to do, of course, changed, and that, you know, lots of events and things canceled because of that, I'm sure similar to what has happened around the world, too. Our Airport Committee, it's made up of a bunch of volunteers that, that do a lot of the planning. We did some things there, some, to make it look better, we've got lots of comments on how this looks, we painted the terminal, we did, we've done lots of things, but we really are still getting our feet wet in this. We've only been like six months of this, and it has been a bit of a drange six months with the COVID, in reality. So we were able to plan and set up one fly-in with a bunch of MLAs, it's about 30 planes that were able to come in, trying to raise awareness of this, of the airport. And so I think a few of you were able to come up, there's about 30 planes, probably 200, 300 people, there was quite a few, and we had, the town, you know, put up, we had this tent, so everyone would be very well spaced out. And with the COVID, everybody's still quite different. Most people didn't even walk up to the tents and get free coffee. Like, it's, you know, it's, everyone was pretty sick. So it was, it was definitely a different event, but we were able to do it. We were able to cancel a lot of, we've canceled a lot of things over the summer, of course, that we normally have going on there, and I didn't like to do that, but that's, that's the climate we're in. Things, things that we do quite normally there, one of the ones we had to cancel, we didn't want to, is our called Copa for Kids, where at the airport, we'll typically fly around 100 or 130 kids, free flights for the kids, the youth ages, it's all for youth ages 10 to 17 or so, but we were, we weren't able to do that. So ongoing, we've sort of learned a few things as going. Being it's our first sort of interim, we're, we're sort of getting our feet wet, and we don't, you know, we've had a, a few issues with how, how we do the different things, and overall, it's worked, it's worked quite well. The airport, we think that, you know, money-wise, we don't really want to talk all the money-wise, we don't know what your costs were for the airport last year, but I do see some things that we understand from running it now, that we see wasn't in the town's sort of airport allocation last year. For example, equipment, fuel, summer students to do the law, there was a lot of stuff that, you know, we're getting one line item, so this year, there'll be a bigger number probably for the airport than what you saw in your last year, but it didn't include all of the, you know, the payment last year would have come from another department, not from a, it wasn't in the airport budget, for example, like those kind of things with the fuel. So anyhow, there's a few things. We made a list of some capital needs that the airport is going to require very soon, and we tried to prioritize them and put them into different categories. So we thought, there's some safety things, there are safety and regulatory items that we, we need to do and maintain. There's some that are operational and usability to make it better for long-term. There's some things that are growth and economic development, which I'm sure all of you guys are, you know, how do we develop more, how do we get more economic development from this? And some things that are aesthetics and, and help with the overall look and feel of the airport. So we sort of divided them up, some of our things we think we need, and the requirements there, and put them into the four categories. We've got some prices for some of those, but I will, we'll probably hand off to Matt eventually, because I think he's the one that's, that's taking that rate. So, so anyhow, but we thought, being as how we're just new, we didn't really want to give you guys a whole lot of numbers or anything, we thought we'd ask if there's any questions you guys have for us. Is, thought that would be fair. Anyone have any questions for how this is going?
Sure, I can start. So could you maybe share with us some of your economic development ideas that you have planned?
Okay, there's a couple things. We've talked with a flying school, and they would love to come, they, but for the flying school to come, there's, they need a mechanic on site, that, an AMO or a, a maintenance organization or a maintenance engineer to be able to work on their stuff. To do that, we need a hangar or such that they can work out of, which we don't have yet. So there is that with a flight school, but it will, will ultimately require probably a hangar that could be constructed by somebody else, or it could be through a grant or with the terminal, but that's one of them. Attracting some of those people here would be great. There is a lot of airplanes in and out, probably on average, about 10 planes a day go in and out of Great Valley. There's, there is a fair bit of traffic, I don't know if you ever notice, it's pretty common, you look up and you see a plane. Everybody knows that I fly, so their kids are, well, was that you, was that you, was that you? It's like, no, I don't fly 10 times a day. I wish I did. But there is a lot of traffic in and out of there, and it, there is enough planes where we could easily keep like a, you know, some equipment, our mechanical, like airplane mechanics type of people busy there. So that's one thing we'd like to see. There's a, in our quote, ultimately, a, a terminal and a hangar, and, and that would work really good, and that would be a good development, and we are still too early to put some numbers to that. There is some grants that would be available to help out with that, and from provincial and federal levels as well, so. So there, that is a possibility that we've looked at.
I would say another thing, Counselor Dodds, as part of the MLA tour this summer was actually a lot of business owners flying around, looking at, I believe, was there 10 airports with the runways of our length or greater in the province?
Yeah.
Eleven. So one was to showcase actually that as part of the tour of the province this summer from the MLA out of Onway, I believe. So we haven't seen any direct benefit from that yet, but that's not something that we've had come to town before. So just the fact that we were kind of out promoting it inside the aviation community itself, which is very small, it's helped boost kind of the image of the airport, and hopefully we can, we could start bringing some more excitement into it that way.
Oh, good, thank you. So would that be one of those kind of low-hanging fruit things that you feel that you've kind of kick-started?
Yeah, definitely, we're in the early phases of it, but you, you see with the federal programs, obviously, federal government runs airport operations or regulations. We see Parkland having some issues with their location, where they're at, and Parkland was really born out of Edmonton City Center Airport shutting down. So I could see if Parkland at some point has further issues in the future, those airplanes are going to need to go somewhere, and the options really are Villeneuve or Drake Valley would be kind of the next place down the road. So I think it's good for us to get our image out, much like we've been doing here, and promoting that, so that in the future, we can be a, definitely a good consideration instead of, you know, somewhere south like Red Deer or, or to Villeneuve.
Absolutely, that sounds, that sounds fantastic. Farrell?
I mean, no, two of the things that have come up in the past have been like the, the GPS, so that we can actually track who's landing and coming and going, to get at least an idea of where we could grow and what industry, is that on the list?
So yeah, GPS is on the list. It's a GPS approach, it's actually not radar for tracking. What it would do would provide, right now, there is no approach, so in instrument flying conditions, where the clouds are low, or the rain or precipitation, or those kinds of things, visibility, aircraft need an instrument approach to, to come into an airport. We don't have one currently right now, so right now, to get into Drake Valley Airport, if you're an instrument rated airplane and, and all those fun things, basically get a descent from Edmonton to a specified height, and I believe right now, it's probably 3,000 to 4,000 feet above ground, which is not very low, because you have to keep your on radar and all the other stuff. With a GPS approach, we could potentially get down, that down to 250 feet, so that's a significant difference. And what that would help us do is maybe bring in, like Jerry's saying, that the flight schools that need an approach to practice those things, or aircraft that are transiting our area, or even want to become based here, it opens up a lot of options, and that would be something that we would be competing with, with Villeneuve would be, they have several approaches and not just a GPS approach. So that would definitely make us more marketable.
Okay. Yeah, and then the other piece is just around the actual hangar developments, and I know we talked a long time ago about how many we have and what space we have left, and if we could change zoning or add more, and has there been any discussion around that?
Some, some, we've got, we've not come to a decision what's best on that. We have had a lot of discussion about that, though, and there has been, there's been some discussion about that. The other is terminal development replacement. We have a terminal that the floor is like up and down, it's on wood, on the foundation that is rotting out, and so soon that's going to be an issue. It's, um, you know, we, we don't have a, a good explanation for fixing it, we know that it's, it's soon going to be an, an issue.
I think 1994 was the last time that that terminal building had any kind of upgrades or anything to it. Prior to that, I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't know when that terminal building was built. I would say, I would speculate in the 70s. I'm not really sure, but 1994 would be the last time I, I believe that it had any kind of major work done to it. So, you know, 26 years is kind of a long time for other works, infrastructure to, to not see much, I would, I would guess, I'm not 100% sure.
One thing that, when we had a, a bunch of the MLAs fly in, Mark Smith was, you know, he's our MLA here, and, and he made a comment, which unfortunately is probably pretty common. He said, "This is a great day for Grayton Valley, we need to mark this, we've never had 30 planes here and 300 people at the airport at one time." And he's like, "This is like a landmark day for Grayton Valley." And I stopped him and corrected him, it's like, this happens several times a year. He's never been there on the day, obviously, but if we have a fly-in, we'll have 40, 50 planes, and that's, you know, those things happen pretty regularly, a couple times a year. And, but I, our MLA didn't know that, and I'm sure lots of other people don't know that, there's some pretty big gatherings that happen there on a fairly regular basis, people as well. So I just thought, if our MLA doesn't have that, you know, that awareness, I wonder how many other people don't have that awareness. So part of our driving is driving the awareness that, hey, we're here. So that's why that fly-in with the, with some of the business leaders in the MLAs was, you know, we think was actually quite, it was quite good, although they, like, it would be nice to see results, like, oh yeah, this guy wants to put up his hangar here right now, and a motor, motor repair shop. But so far, we haven't got a motor repair shop where the thing's coming, but there's, there's a possibility still, so.
Amelia?
So Jerry, for your club, this is the first year of operations, right? So, you know, I've talked to a couple of your members, and they love that, you know, you have the control, and, you know, you can decide what's priority and what's not and all of that. But, you know, how's, how's it going so far, and you know, you, you know, you like that control and all that, or you're like, oh shit, what do we get into, or, you know, how's the, how's the feel out there?
Can I get that, or should I? Okay, go for it.
I think it's definitely been eye-opening for us, but it's been good. The level of service for the airports come up, mostly because we have people who are pilots and know the industry, and know what services we need, and where to best allocate the, the money and the resources to, so that we can keep this thing viable and keep it going. And that's part of, you know, Jerry saying, getting our feet wet was definitely a lot of that, and prioritizing where we want to go and what we want to do. So we've spent, as Jerry said, since March, kind of sitting down and going, hey, wouldn't it be really good, I think we should do this, or do this, or do that. And, and that's where we came up with, you know, obviously, safety and regulatory are going to be our top priorities with, with the airport and town, and we also see that economic development's going to be up there, too. We want to make this thing sustainable for the whole community and not just a select amount of people. Do you want to, do you got to add to that?
Not really. We are, we're sort of getting our feet wet and, and even figuring out the appropriation, how this even works, and, you know, we obviously, you know, it's the first time we did it, we kind of expected it would be a little different than what it is on some things, but there's a process we're, we're learning and working through, so. So, you know, we just are stepping through that process and sometimes finding it frustrating a little, but, but it's more of the process that we're learning, so.
Corey?
Yeah, I just want to say, you guys are doing a great job. I've been down there more times in the last few months than I think I've been the entire time I've lived in Grayton, so it's really cool to see, and it's great to hear that this stuff is already going on. My kid's, Ezra can't wait to get into a plane, he's got to be a little bit older, but he can't wait to get out there, and it's, it's just an experience that a lot of people in our community aren't getting, so I'm really glad you guys are kind of taking the bull by the horns on this.
Yes, thank you very much for pretend, or for coming today. I think that the airport has so much potential for economic growth, and it's exciting to see that so many people that are so passionate about it are now kind of the leaders in it, and yeah, we'll just wait and see all the amazing things that'll be happening.
Great, I have a question. Just before you go, I, I, I don't know if you've talked to, to administration, but
we're heading into a budget, you heard that through the library in that discussion, so it would seem to me that as we're having budget discussions, that there should be a line item, that you talked about, Jerry, instead of just sort of, there's this that we have to grade a little bit, we have to do this, it's sort of boxed into something, but, but, but if you've got capital things that you need to be putting out there, you need to get that to, to us and through administration and into our budget discussions, if, and that's happening as we speak, so.
So if I get that through, is the correct process to give that through to Matt? And then, okay, we will get that through to Matt here today, we've got some goodies to do with that.
Oh, Farrell?
I just wanted to wrap up and say the same thing, echoing the comments that, we've been out there with our son lots, too, and he really appreciates the work that goes into it, because that wouldn't happen in a lot of other communities or towns, without all of you guys, and you guys spend so much time volunteering, and we know that, so, thank you. And also, in the last eight years that I've been on council, there has been talk more than once about, well, maybe we should just sell the airport, maybe we should just give it away. But in the end, it's always that hope, because it's like, well, there's so much potential. And so I, I agree, when you guys came forward and offered to take over, I was really excited, and I think it's great, because we have people driving that, that hope who, who know where, how to get there. So, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming today. Take care. Okay, moving along, we will go to six point three, Drayton Valley RCMP stats, August twenty twenty. Sergeant Aaron Matthews, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the airport delegation, I do have two daughters who are AMEs, so. Just putting that out there. Aircraft maintenance engineer.
Did you write that down, Matt? Are you listening, Matt?
Anyways, for August twenty twenty, I'm I'm kind of looking at new ways of um revamping how we're providing the stats, because they are somewhat convoluted. I know that a lot of the uh, like, the first page that um the criminal code offenses, the crime gauge, I mean, that's from January to August. So that's that's a, really isn't reflective of what's happening specifically in that month. Um and same with the first couple of pages of the reports. But if we actually go into the actual crime statistics uh for August, we can see the changes from year to year. Uh and in reality, for August, there is not, there isn't really a big change um from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Uh the assaults went from six to eight. Uh we had, uh three of those assaults were domestic related and resulted in charges. Uh uttering threats, it says that it went from zero in twenty nineteen, which I find hard to believe, to six in twenty twenty. But um all of those did not result in charges, because they don't meet the threshold of the criminal code. Two of them were over Facebook. And we all know Facebook is true. One was an in, was an interesting one, because they bought drugs from someone and he transferred the money to the wrong person. And then, the person that they didn't get the money was a little upset, so. I thought that was pretty interesting that they would even report that to the RCMP. However, some things never change. Um, moving on, our break and enters, actually, if you go from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, went down from twenty-two to eighteen. The majority of them actually this time around were uh businesses, their yards, that's that type of thing. Um we did it, we have laid two charges in the in the break and enters that have occurred. Thefts of vehicles, again, if you look at between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh went down from six to three. Uh and we have one charge in there as well. Our theft unders are pretty much on track, the same as they were last year. They went from twenty-two to twenty-one. Um theft from motor vehicles, we had four, uh three of those were unlocked. And um one of the other theft of theft unders was uh three bags of recycling bottles, so. Getting on, now, the stats were a little bit skewed. If you look at the August twenty sixteen to twenty twenty actual statistics, where it comes down to the Form ten, um MHA reported, it says that we had none, which is not true. We actually had twelve mental health uh calls in August. Uh four, we ended up transporting to facilities, whether it be in Edmonton or Pinoka. Uh and two were transported to hospital in order to be dealt with there. So again, I know we discussed the, a lot of our mental health issues. And uh we are, they are on the rise, they are becoming very common. And I know that I talked with Nancy with regards to the PACT program, which is a police um policing crisis team is what it is. Um it's called PACT, and they do have it in Edmonton, they do have it in the larger centers. I have reached out to Alberta Health, just try and see whether or not we can get a pilot project for Drayton Valley and area. And what it is, is the um, you have a um partnership between um the Alberta Health Services, mental health people. So you have like a a mental health um nurse that teams up with a police officer. And they, that is their specific duty, is going to these mental health calls and dealing with these people. And I think that it would be a great idea to bring it to Drayton Valley. So I'm kind of still working on that, because I think that uh it's something that would be very useful here. So um that's about where I am with that, so. Is there any questions?
Thank you for that. Yeah, I think that's important. I appreciate when we had that conversation. I think that, like you said, a lot of times when you're going and you're dealing with these calls, you know, at in the middle of the night or whenever, if you could have that person that was that ride along, you're either dealing with addiction or mental health issues. So y- you need to have that experience and that resources. And I mean, other communities are having it and they're seeing this success and they're seeing how advantageous it is. So I mean, if we could be having that here, and like you said, if it's a pilot program, that would be fantastic. Like, why not let us be that study for a smaller community? Like you said, they're usually in big cities, so why couldn't we be that, you know, test run to see, will it work here? And what are the benefits and how do we, you know, how do we?
Because our mental health issues aren't just in the big cities.
No, no.
So it's, you know, we need to try and get them into the rural areas and see if we can't get something going.
Yeah, and I think even with COVID, right, that the people's mental health isn't, you know, the best. And and we need to be looking after everybody and everybody within our community, for sure.
Yeah.
Tom?
Sergeant Matthews, I have a good news story. Um I uh lost my golf clubs and uh and so I I did a, some rideabouts and some conversations with some folks. And uh they ended up uh being in, coming back to me, um which I thought was was great. Uh and so I I imagine that I spoke to somebody that that thought, well, I, I, what am I gonna do with a set of left-hand golf clubs? I I guess I'll give them back, which I thought was great. And but to to me, that that really says that there's there's more to it than than just the people taking things. The the other thing, though, that occurs to me is that when I speak to people about it, they, I hear more often than not that they're not reporting. And I reported, uh but the people are are just, it's it's a, it's, I can't claim it on insurance. It's just an issue, I left my car door open, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not getting the reporting. Um do you, do you have a s- the the same sense or or?
There are a lot of people that aren't, that I don't think are reporting. Um and uh unless you report, we can't help, right? Um we have everything in place when people have things stolen. I mean, we put them on our computer system. And when we recover property, we can go through and do a search and say, oh, this belongs to so-and-so. This belongs to so-and-so. But if they don't report and they don't provide us with information, then uh we really pl- plus, I mean, we need to know the areas that these things are occurring in, right? Is this like, you know, uh just a specific area that we're having an awful lot of issues in? And then we can take a look and surveil what is going on in that particular area, so. And who is around in that particular area.
So i- in my final question, I think is, uh uh every time I go through the stats, I I it, they don't ever really make a whole lot of sense. They don't address what I hear in the community, they don't address and the the issues that people are faced with. And so that when you have the opportunity to come, I I like the way that you put it when you opened, is to say these are these, and you can look at them at your at your leisure. But really, in reality, here's where we're at today in the community of Drayton Valley. This is what specifically that we're thinking about, this is what we're working on. And um, you know, that that's the kind of thing that that's refreshing for me to hear. Because then, when I'm speaking to the public, uh then I can say, oh, by the way, there's some other things that you you're not reading about, but here it is, right? So so that would be a question I would say, so how are we doing? What's, what is it that we should be paying attention to and?
Well, I think that uh, again, we go back to the homelessness issue. There seems to be a a big misconception that the homeless people are the ones that are responsible for everything that's going on. And that's not true. With winter coming, we're going to run into some more problems. But those problems are more related to them sleeping in the post office or the bank vestibules and that sort of thing, trying to keep warm. I know the MAP program uh from the meeting the other day isn't likely going to open until November uh becau- due to their funding, uh which is going, I mean, let's face it, it's been really nice recently. But it's going to come to an end at some point. And, you know, that we're already starting to see them, you know, getting reports of them in the mornings, sleeping in in, you know, the vestibules and such. Um I think that the letter that went out with regards to the the um the town, working with uh the school division and the RCMP with regards to that path, I think that was great. Um I try and get out there and and, you know, tell people that, you know, this isn't, it's not the homeless people that are causing all the issues, it's other sides. And we do have some things coming in place that, like I said, I can't give you an awful lot of information on. But we're working on some things that we're going to be doing there in the future to try and um get that whole drug side of things taken care of, so.
Corey?
And uh so looking at the numbers, just like Tom was saying there, I think it's hard for you guys to paint a picture that we're looking for with what we're having. And I I know you find that as well, Sergeant Matthews. But um my thought was, is let's say a guy has his barbecue there, goes out to barbecue, sees his propane tank is missing. So is there a streamlined way that people could get in touch with the RCMP? Cause if I see my propane tanks gone, I'm not gonna call and say, is this an emergency? Be like, no, I, just my propane tank. Like, I'm not gonna go and talk and do, I'm not gonna do that. I'm just gonna say, ah, I lost a propane tank, and I'll complain to my friends and go on with my life. So is there like a form or something people could just fill out and send in, so you guys have at least some information? So, cause I think the majority of people, they see and they're like, I just couldn't be bothered.
There's an online reporting system now.
Is there?
Yeah, there is, and I I added into my media release, like, every week, it's the very first thing on it. Um and it tells, tells people what they can uh report. So I mean, it it's things like, you know, uh thefts from vehicles, uh you know, propane tanks, that sort of thing. And you can submit it online. And then we have a record of it. Right? And then the only time that you can't is if you have any suspects. So if you had a suspect, then you would have to call the, you know, the attachment. But otherwise, uh we're trying to streamline things and make it easier for people. So, yeah, we do have an online reporting system now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Maybe that's something, Winston, that we could be on, if you're finding that there's things going on. Yeah, and I just had one, one other thing. I know uh policing through COVID has been a bit of a gong show, and I think everything's been a bit of a gong show. But one thing that, there is a report that came out the other day, that I think it's been in the last two or three months in Alberta, there's been over, I think we've had two hundred COVID deaths in Alberta since the whole thing got started. I don't keep close track. But um opioid deaths have skyrocketed. We've had over three hundred in some just in the last couple of months. So are you noticing a bit of an uptake, uptick in overdoses in our area, even with the CERB money that's coming in? And what are your concerns when that money stops in our community, that we should have our community prepared for?
Well, I think that uh the CERB money certainly has allowed an awful lot of people to buy better drugs as a result, because they now have money. Um and once that dries up, they are going to obviously go to alternative means of getting money. So I do believe that we're gonna see an increase in break and enters uh in that, in thefts uh as a result. Um and there, I would like to see us, you know, again, I talked once about um maybe partnering with somebody who makes the um the lights, the the ones that go on, motion lights. You know, and and providing those to the citizens of Drayton Valley. You know, get them at a reduced price and you can provide them at a, at a cost, a slow cost um to assist in that kind of respect. Um because, again, darkness, that's what criminals use to their advantage. So if we have an awful lot more light or motion lights on everyone's houses and such, then um, you know, that's certainly going to deter them. But I do see us, uh once the CERB money runs out, yes, we're going to be seeing an increase in in likely break and enters and thefts.
Those are all good questions. Um so, uh in your opinion, how do you feel about the telescammers? Do you feel that they're serving the purpose that they were in place they were intended for? And do you think that with, if they were there or if they were gone, would it make a difference in your opinion, like?
I don't think they are deterring people. However, we are using them to our advantage. Um we'd like to see a few more in different places. But yeah, but uh they have definitely been very useful for us.
Okay, good.
We've used them quite a lot. Um like, and I think there was a misconception, because we were under the understanding that it had ended at the end of June. And so then we weren't asking for any video or anything like that for July. And then we found out mid-August that, oh, it didn't end the end of June. So then we started back up again, and they've been quite useful for us, yes.
Perfect, good to know. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for coming again today.
You guys have a wonderful day.
You too, take care. And I think we'll call a ten-minute break before we move on to uh just decision items. Yep? Five, ten? Seven? Meet in the middle?
So I'm I'm gonna bring up a motion.
You're gonna bring up a motion, when?
Today.
Was it on the agenda?
It is now.
Well, you know, you had to have added on it, the addition.
I didn't know what was gonna happen with the library until now. So we're gonna, you add delegations, now I'm gonna act on that delegate, on the caution.
I think we can add an addition. Sabina?
Manolent, it's a driver, enduro driver. Some wildly expensive brand, I've forgotten what it, the wheel, the the big gear foot, right? Um I don't know why he had it sitting in his garage, but it's mine now, you look at it back. And finally, I got a long customer's, I believe, used to use the three arm, because it was all over. use the three iron because it was all the way.
And I always find, because I was three-armed, I got two breaks. Because if you can find something, they tell you it's a bit spruce in here, of course, the club, right? And you can get it back. And then when you swing it, you swing it differently than swinging it.
Anyway, we were going to talk about this nice that you guys have worked. I want to time that correctly. Do you want counsel tomorrow or are we going to? Tomorrow, perfect. Do you want to talk after that thing? Because I want to avoid having such a negative situation. Yeah. Perhaps here, I mean, actually, they've come and gone to win and win. One time I'll have to be in the office.
But I don't know.
Nobody ever comes to this.
I don't know.
There's a call number you can call.
Yeah, you know what? Yeah.
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 Yeah, there have always been a few.
What's that? I don't know where he is. I don't know where he is.
The joint council was sometimes pictures of her.
Glenn had an argument with Lori Clark.
In the bargain, they only buy. Yeah, anyway, I'll call them and I'll give you.
Yeah. We were talking about ready to use the story.
Unrelated question while you're here. The minister of the Glenn round on Friday. That was Scott Fosca, what was showing you around?
Yes.
I thought, you know what? I looked at this and then. And usually it needs a little CEO for this, just the head guy. Yeah.
So we're starting to build around that. We need to go, we need to get out.
Yeah. So you're not expecting a solution to this tomorrow? Because I, oh, is it? So also, you know, the county wants to buy the United Church for $1,000, right?
Yep.
So the conversation, do we have to?
Has ever not.
Well, yeah, but I bought the trip because they just did a motion because they have to get permission from the town to own property and this municipality. So you're going to get us. So why the county not the town to buy the United Church?
Did you get a coffee?
Yeah, the nothing's for nothing.
At the sunrise today? 2:30 today at Sunrise Pond? Nathan, are the, are the TVs not working? Are the TVs not working? Oh.
I'm cold. Me too. And I was walking out the door and I had, because I had my winter coat or my fall coat on, and I'm like, should I run back and get it? I'm like, oh, I'll be fine because I don't want to wear a coat. It's my arms. It's normally warm in here. Can we turn the heat on in here? Where does it come from? I know. Then, are you into the 2:30 thing?
Yeah, I wanted to check it out. A couple of people have asked me about it. I'm like,
I can like go for five minutes and that's it. I know, I keep saying to Jay, we need to go for a walk over there. Check it out, check the new sidewalk out and over there. Oh, I know. We always go, we don't just walk, like, we'll, we'll go, like, go everywhere. Like, the other night, we parked at Canadian Tire, and then we went out across, you know, where you go down around there and then cross that bridge and all out in the road? It just goes to the road. Oh, yeah, like, you cross a bridge and it's all paved. It's really wide, like, the kids were skateboarding and scootering on it. And it's really wide when you come off, is it 62nd? What's that dirt gravel road back there? When you come off there, like, you think it's like, you drive on it, that's how wide it is. Because the kids were like, this is awesome, we never knew it was here. It's so wide. Yeah. Yeah. So we go there and take the dog, kind of just try to mix it up, right? What are you eating? Oh. I have a banana. What's a great idea? Oh, good. Yeah, I was really shocked to hear that. Wow.
Trying to find that. Oh, there it is. Okay, we'll call our meeting back to order at 10:24 a.m. And we'll move on to our decision item, 7.1, Brussels County Letter Regarding Recreation Cost Sharing. Winston, this is you.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Dodds. We received on September the 21st, a letter from Brussels County indicating that the cost share agreement for 2020 would be reduced as a per capita amount. And as the letter reflects, it's about $58.49 per capita, which equates to an amount of $454,584.28. And so we are into third quarter, and we have received this basically in the third quarter, impacting our current budget sort of revenue projections. Realizing as well with COVID, we as the town has taken a hit as well with revenues not being realized as planned initially before COVID hit us. So that being said, the letter basically says, as councilors probably read it as well, that they are facing undue hardships as well with the linear assessment being looked at and the police funding and all those type of factors that has caused them to make this decision. However, there's also been a report that has been undertaken a few years ago that depicts that the town of Drayton Valley is higher than most municipalities of comparable sorts. And so this is what brought the county to this decision. And so I leave it for council's deliberation here this morning, and I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have for us as administration.
Thank you for that. Yeah, definitely, this letter has came as a surprise and a disappointment for sure. And like you said, so late in the year, right, we're receiving this now and it's, has there already been money that the county has already paid to us or a portion of it?
Yeah, we received Q1, there was a percentage forwarded and paid to the town.
So what percentage was that?
It was roughly, and I stand to be corrected, a quarter of the $1,046. It's about roughly a quarter of that amount. Yep.
Okay, a quarter of the, okay, one quarter of the original amount. And I believe we also have the intermunicipal cooperation agreement that is signed between both the town and the county. I know that's something that Bill's brought to our attention that in there, I believe it states something that, you know, if we're going to be making any changes to budget implications or anything like that, monetary value that I think we need at least a year's notice or something in that agreement it states or something like that. So I think this is something that we definitely have to perhaps get a little bit more legal advice and dig a little bit deeper of how, how we can go about dealing with this matter. Are there any questions or comments from anybody? Winston?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think what the, the approach should be is we should immediately have a response to the letter to the county to address our concerns. And as you alluded to it, that we'll be looking at options as to how we will have to mitigate this potential funding retraction this late in the year. My staff has prepared a draft, and we can share that with council later today, if you so wish, before we send it out under the mayor's hands. May and I have looked at the letter already, but we just want all of council to have a look at it. And then from there, we will exercise our options. And we have an opportunity tomorrow as well at the joint council to talk about this very vigorously as well.
Absolutely. Tom?
So it's relatively not new. I actually had an opportunity to go through the, the report that was done by Alberta Municipal Affairs by farmers. And they, they were clear in their, in their statements that, that the county has, has been well above most medians. The, the trouble that we have, I think, with, with that question is, it's, we don't know if they're comparing apples to apples or how things actually work. But if you just look at it on paper, their numbers are high, others are not. And I think that's where we need to better understand if we're going to come together as a community, I think we need to understand exactly what, what it is that they, they see, what we see, how, how it all works. Because I've got to tell you, the, the, the fighting is, it's got to stop, right? I think it's just not productive. And we have to get somewhere. I have no idea how it may turn out tomorrow, but I'm expecting an exciting meeting. And I think that it's time for us to start expressing our thoughts about how things should work in a community and how we, how we think it should move forward. And so your letter is bang on, and I, I look forward to seeing it.
Bill?
Appreciate your comments, Councilor McGee. And I've been involved with some of these negotiations with them. And the big thing, you say, you got to have somebody to understand, you got to have somebody that wants to understand. And that's the difficulty that we're having is that you can be as transparent as you want, but if they don't want to understand it, they're not, and they can give their message to their people however they want, even though it's not true. The situation now, it looks like it's going to cost our residents $600,000. Totally unacceptable, in my opinion. Therefore, it, to me, it leaves no option other than looking at a two-tier charging system. I don't expect our residents to subsidize county residents. Therefore, it's, in my opinion, that we're going to have to have two different systems. And it's not right. It's not right. But I, I see no other option.
Emila?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate both the comments and especially Councilor Maggie's comments that, you know, this should have been a conversation that we should have had prior to the letter being sent to us. You know, we are talking about whether the, the recreation facility is in the town or the county is irrelevant. We are catering to the whole community as a whole. So, and, and, you know, that, that's a conversation we should have had, together with the county as well, you know, about service levels, what services are we going to provide? And the hardships are not just for them, but for us as well, you know? Whole Alberta is facing these hardships, you know, with pandemic, whole, whole country, whole world is, you know, facing these hardships. But it's just a matter of willingness to sit down and discuss and find solutions for our community, right? You know, and that's what's lacking right now. The, the, you know, face-to-face, you know, heart-to-heart conversations. I think, you know, hopefully, come Thursday, we will have that discussions. So we can, you know, find a path moving forward. Like Tom mentioned, you know, the, the fighting need to stop, solution need to come to the forefront.
Cory?
Going to try to choose my words carefully. So, and I actually like it too, if Annette could speak to some stuff too, if she feels so inclined. We spent over two years going through the budget of recreation, and I hate going through spreadsheets, and we did that every meeting for two years. Initially with Counselor Heinrich and Gressler, and Counselor Gressler. And after a year of searching for Bigfoot and not finding it, Counselor Gressler gave up that search, and Counselor Wiltse came and joined our crew, to which they also saw that it was probably a deer, there was no Bigfoot. And we continued in our plan that we had worked on from the get-go to together find efficiencies and find the best way that we can work together to provide the best quality service at the right price for our mutual residents benefit. Years previously, I think the county had contributed based on an agreement in 2012, I think, what, 870 a year? It was always based on the previous three years. So even on paper, they still were not truly paying their way. Through this process, I think last year, they came up to $1,032,000, which was reflecting the true cost that we had analyzed together of what it costs to provide this service for our residents based on the 50-50 split of students that are typically what is subsidized within our school divisions. The numbers are still the same. It might even be 51-49 county right now. So really, they should be paying more than we are. But yet, we look at it and said, no, we didn't go back and say, oh, well, actually, you didn't pay us for all these other years. We said, no, let's move forward. Because our message for the last three years has been, let's move forward. The past is behind us, let's move forward together. Which led us forward into a giant pothole that we fell into. And so now, going forward, I don't even know what the approach is. I am incredibly frustrated with what the process has been up to this point. But arbitration doesn't really make the most sense. But I don't want to play a game of, you know, I have two kids, and usually one will start crying, and I hear the other one crying. Well, what happened? Well, he hit me. So what'd you do? I hit him back. I don't want to play the hit you, hit me back game. There has to be a way that we can paint a picture that makes it clear, hey, you made a decision that's going to cost Drayton Valley residents $600,000 in the last minute of the end of the year, and now it's on us. So you know what? We need to look after our residents, which we don't like to say because we look at Drayton Valley as a community, not as our ratepayers. So here we have, I'm sorry, I'm grandstanding, I'm almost done. So here we are at this point where, okay, we have to make up that 600, and now you're not going to give us money in the future. So it forces us to have you're not going to give us money in the future. So it forces us to have a conversation that we don't want to have about water rates and a tiered system. And hey, little Johnny from the county is going to pay a thousand dollars more for hockey than the Drayton Valley guy. And we don't want to be the bad guy, because that's not what we do. Our heart is to keep everybody together. And if together to you means two communities with one future, or it means one giant community, it doesn't matter to me, because ultimately, we're trying to do what's best. And I hate that we even have to go down this route and have this conversation.
Absolutely.
Can we expect that tomorrow? Want to say that again?
Yeah, exactly. Farrell?
Yeah, I am utterly disappointed, especially that they are choosing to do it at the end of this year for this year. Like, I don't know anyone who makes a business decision like that at the end of the year, being like, well, actually, I'm going to cut all your wages back. I'm going to change everything we've done for the whole year. Who does planning like that? I don't know how we can move forward, other than looking at a two-tiered system, which will be insane. It'll be expensive, it'll be costly, and it'll also be, every time you walk in, you have to scan into every hockey game you go to, every facility you use. Like, it's a process for everyone. And especially when they've been so on board. In these last couple of years, we have been making huge strides in terms of usage and what we're doing and what we're planning. And for me, the whole point of the committee the last two years was to look at the future of recreation and where we want it to go, and the level of service that we offer. Yeah, we might offer different things than Rocky Mountain House does. That doesn't mean they're bad things. It's different. And that's okay. And our residents want that, and they, so far, have been wanting to pay for that. And I'm, I'm really worried about what's going to happen in the future, because like Corey said, this isn't just now. This isn't just one year. This is, we're already in October, so this is also going to be starting again in January. And we're talking about building a new pool, and they have supported the capital cost of building that new pool. But it still goes back to the operations, and using it again, and all our clubs. And of all our facilities, our clubs use it more than any drop-in, which is made up of all our kids. And those are the ones in the end who are going to lose out. So it's going to be not fun. That's the short answer.
Absolutely. Without all being said, is there anybody that would like to make a motion? Emila?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that council direct administration to draft a response letter to Brazos County regarding recreation cost sharing. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I had another thing.
Yeah, I think that we've all said it, and I think we've all said it well. There's a lot of frustration, there's a lot of disappointment, I think, from, from each of us, from myself. I know that the county is saying that, you know, the province keeps unloading all these cuts and these decisions onto them. Well, they're just doing the same to us right now. So I mean, these are the decisions that we now have to face, and these are the decisions, unfortunately, that the community is going to have to be, be left with, and that's really unfair. I, I believe that people don't move to a community because they have well-paved roads. They move to a community because of the facilities, because the quality of life, because of what that community has to offer as a whole. So I do think that we have some, some big decisions ahead of us, and I think we have to be firm and strong on the decisions that we make. And we have to look at it as, what is the best decision for both communities with all of the, the residents? Because like everybody said, it is about a fifty-fifty split, right? And it's not like one municipality has more or less than the other. So I think that, yeah, it's not going to be easy. Farrell?
No, and I think for me also, for them, it's, they're acting like cowards in terms of taking, taking the, the funding away, but also not wanting to deal with the consequences. They're not dealing with the choice. They're not coming to the table and saying, you know what, we really have to reduce this. Let's work together and say, okay, you know what, we've got to close one rink. Like, there are options and things we could talk about together, but just to say, we're pulling our funding, we don't care what you do, is really cowardly.
Absolutely. So the motion is that council direct administration to draft a response letter to Brazos County regarding recreation cost sharing. All those in favor? That is carried. That was a difficult conversation, but one well-needed. Kesa will move along to department reports. So planning and development is first. That is you, Matt.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor Dodds and council. So planning and development, we all know the land use bylaw is going on quickly. The, the survey has closed. We got a total of fifty-four responses. Out of a community of seven thousand and some, that might not seem like a whole lot, but regarding the rather dry subject nature for people other than myself and Lawani, fifty-four responses is still a good sample size, and gives us good feedback. So that, and it should be ready for frustrating at council at the end of the month. And actually, I have a phone call with Brian coming up today. And that's, that's pretty much it for planning and development, just our regular day-to-day stuff. But land use bylaws, of course, is a big initiative. So, thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Tom?
Good morning, Matt. And so fifty-four responses from the public. Generally, are people, what are people concerned with around the planning and development?
Thank you, Councilor Ghee. The, this survey focused on targeted questions for land use bylaws in certain, in certain areas. So one of the targeted questions was landscaping, and whether residents want to see, generally see more trees for commercial developments, or less trees, or if the trees are the same. Seventy-four percent, around seventy-four percent responded that they either want to see more trees for commercial developments, or, or keep them, keep them the same. Another pretty, pretty much consensus in the community was, they wanted, residents want to see development regulations streamlined for home offices. So for example, if someone has like a consulting business, and operates that business as a, just as an office, that used to be a spare bedroom in their house or something, they should be able to do that without, without going through any process for development permit. The only process that would be required would be a business license. So we're, we're going to, of course, reflect that in the first draft. That's, that's pretty much it. But I will, I can send the engagement summary to you, to the rest of council.
It'd be good to know that, because even when I look at it, I'm, I'm not sure what I should even look at. I, I just hope that we do a good job, and, and we do it well. And we have rules in place, and I think that's, that's what we need. But if there's opportunity to change things, that's what you're asking, that's what you put out to the public, then, then let's, let's have a look and do what we think we should be doing in that, in that change. So I applaud that, the work that you've, you've done already. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Has there been an increase in home-based businesses due to COVID at all, have you noticed?
Just Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Dodds, I don't, of course, have an exact number, but we've, we've processed a number of applications for home-based businesses. Probably year by year, they're probably up this year. But, I mean, that's just my guess right now. But going forward, and even before COVID-19, just with the downturn in the economy, we're going to see more home-based businesses. And that, I believe, is something we need to facilitate more in our, with the regulations and our planning framework. And of course, the land use bylaws is where that happens.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with you. I think we have to definitely be open for, you know, that coming forward, and be very flexible, I think. Because like you said, I do predict that there will be an increase, definitely.
I should add also that, I mean, provided that, it doesn't, the home-based business doesn't result in impacts to neighboring residents and surrounding residents. I mean, because there is a balance between facilitating development and mitigating the impacts. But as long as it doesn't have any impact, then yeah, for sure, we should be able to, we should facilitate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Kate, thank you very much for that. Kate, Community Services and FCSS, Annette?
Good morning, Deputy Mayor.
Good morning, council.
A few things to report on. Just want to take a look or talk a bit about the IPD process with the aquatic facility. Of course, this is the IPD team's report on the validation in terms of the cost and reassessing the cost estimates for the construction of the new aquatic center. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the team, and they are, of course, identifying additional costs associated with the materials necessary for the pool. Part of that cost, of course, is related to meeting the requirements of the ICIP grant. And while there is a contingent of that cost that's associated with risks that may not be realized, we are anticipating, and the team is suggesting, that there could be a one million dollar increase in the cost to the aquatic facility. Needless to say, the team is challenged to see if they can't bring that down. And we're looking for opportunities within the community as well, in terms of what we can do to try and bring some of those costs down. So that will be the ongoing message, but certainly an indication that because we did not hit the April thirtieth deadline, we knew that there would be some increases in, in the project cost. The fundraising committee, of course, has initiated their campaign to see if we can't acquire the remaining funds necessary for the pool. I know that they've approached Wirehauser, Kiara, and the Rotary Club. And the mayor and I will be sitting down with Arc Resources next week. And the group, of course, together with the mayor, will be speaking to Parkland County on October the twentieth. We are still working with the CFAP application, and that group, of course, is hoping to acquire significant funds through the CFAP program. Specialized transportation was approved, and we are proceeding with the development of a contract. There's a bit of delay on it, simply because the business that we're working with is wanting to go through a new business entity. So they're going through the creation of a new entity. So it's not exactly intercon messaging, it will become a separate entity. And that's protection for, for intercon messaging, which is perfectly understandable. Some other things with respect to capital projects, the restoration of Diamond Number Five is just nearing its completion. And the mosquito ball diamond, we're hoping that we can get sod laid before the snow flies. So we're working on that portion of it. Playground revitalization, the two projects, or three projects that were finished, the two playgrounds, of course, the Little Lions Playground is getting well-used, I understand. Every time I drive by, I see quite a few kids on that playground. So that's nice to see. And then, of course, the pump track, so more than just a few people. Somebody described it yesterday as an anthill. So that could become the term, the new terminology and nickname for the pump track. So it was really nice to, to see that officially open. The contractor is finishing off a few things, including some hydro seating. So that will occur here soon. The Cadence Court moisture issues that we have in our affordable housing units is going to be corrected toward the end of this month. So we're hoping that we see positive results on dealing with the moisture issues in the affordable housing units. The Early Childhood Development Center is doing actually very well in handling the COVID-19 regulations. Considering how strict they have to be, they're doing very well. I mean, certainly a decrease in the number of children in the center contributes to everybody else staying healthy, but it's something where the cleanliness of that facility is indicating to the rest of the parents within the community that, yes, this is a safe place to bring your children, and a good program base. Of course, now our challenge coming up is the challenge of sustaining the center, as we recognize that the end of, at March, in March, the end of March of next year, we will see the end of the ELCC funding. So certainly, I think all advocacy groups are wanting to see a national childcare program in place. So there's a big, strong push for a national childcare program. FCSS, of course, there's always a demand for FCSS services. There's an increase now, because with the amount of grants and funding programs that were out there last year that are no longer in existence, and the extra pressures put on by COVID, a lot of those organizations are going to have CSSS. The further challenges being raised as Brazos County is reviewing the FCSS budget as well, and could potentially lose the FCSS funding from, from Brazos County. Now, that's in terms of the 2080 contribution. If Brazos County doesn't put in its allocation, we don't receive the eighty percent allocation from the province. So it's not a significant number that comes from Brazos County. So we're hoping that we will continue to see funding coming from Brazos County. That's my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that, Bill.
Thank you for your report. In regards to the aquatic center, you mentioned that because of equipment subject to conditions of the grant you had mentioned, were they not aware of these conditions prior, or the mechanical equipment is what, so much different, that it's going to cost perhaps a potential million dollars?
Thank you, Councilor Ballas. The change in the ICIP grant was on the basis of generating energy use from the waste heat. That was when we made the initial application. So now we're having to change that application to the solar. And yes, we do have solar-ready facility, and we do have the inclusion of the infrastructure for Cogen plant. We have some of the final costs on what those two things will mean. So it's an increase in the cost associated with the solar installation and the Cogen plant. But that's not the majority of it. A lot of it is still associated with an increase in costs related to PVC, the mechanical equipment, general costs with relation to an escalation. So the escalation of price is around 2.5%. And that's reasonable, considering that over the course of ten months, you might see a three percent escalation cost in any construction job. Other costs are associated with COVID-19 with respect to the onsite costs of safety and transportation and accommodation for the construction crews. So we are being hit and impacted by that as well, too.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with your comments about ECDC. You know, I'm hearing lots of great things about that. The, the pump track, you're right, you know, it's an anthill, there's lots of kids and, and adults as well enjoying. My question, Mr. Zinn, is that there's kids there, that sometimes they wear the helmets, sometimes they don't. And, you know, I know we have that notice there, but there's nobody to enforce or, you know, to, to inform them as well. So if, you know, Godspeed, if something does happen, what, you know, are we covered, or what, what's there for protection for us?
Thank you, Councilor Gaman. I think the biggest thing is making sure that we are doing everything that we can to ensure that safety is being followed. Signage was necessary, so we could not open up the facility, and that signage was there. The sign itself says that protective equipment, and certainly a strong recommendation that helmets are to be worn. And because we don't have the ability to supervise that venue, that's the best what we can do in terms of recommendation on the sign. we can do in terms of recommendation on the sign. We do also have the ability to, between our peace officer and the CSRO officer, which we've already communicated to the CSRO officer, to frequent the pump track to encourage all the users, not just children, but all users to use helmet, helmets on that facility. In the end, if I, if I can say that what would happen in any sort of a challenge is that the town, of course, would be named in any, any suit that might come forward in terms of an injury. But as with every other case, it's a matter of an determination by the courts to, to determine if we have done everything in our power to ensure the safety of the children. Short of budget, at this point in time, we are doing what we believe is everything that we can do to ensure the safety of, of the users of that pump track. So the short answer is that we are never guaranteed that we have come to the ultimate, but as far as due diligence, that's the principle on which we are exercising.
Tom?
Good morning, Annette. Thanks for the report. I did ask on Sunday when we opened the pump park about the dirt as opposed to hydroseating or sodding, and the indication was that it's getting late for sod, and, but yet we're, we're going to sod the, the baseball field, and we're going to hydroseed the, the pump park. Now, these are the decisions that are made by the people that are building the facility, not us, right?
That is correct, Counselor. The pump track itself is going to be hydroseeded. If, we've been in contact with about four or five different sod companies, and the change from a few years back to now is that sod is laid in long, rolled-out strips, and they had the machinery to do so. A nice ball diamond is nice and flat, makes it easy to lay sod. The pump track, I would not want that job. Because you would have to then cut up so many pieces, and you would probably lose half of the pieces in those three-foot strips of sod just because of having to cut it. Also, in terms of the, the angles on all of those, on the embankments, the slopes, the displays, means that you have to actually physically nail in or secure the sod pieces to the ground. And with the way that that place is getting action, that, to me, one is a safety concern, but it's also, how, how is this going to stay with all of that traffic on there? So the pump track will be hydroseeded.
Okay, and that answers the question. I hadn't really gone to the technical side of laying it, so I got it. Now, the, the second question I have is about the National Childcare Program and the FCSS funding that may or may not be available to us, but, and it's really just a statement is that we have a joint council meeting tomorrow, so I hope we're ready for, to lay out sort of, here's the issues that we face, here's where you fund us, and are you taking it all or are you having further discussion so that we can, we can enter into our own budget discussions given some, some knowledge? But, you know, as a, as a counselor, sometimes I forget, oh yeah, there's, they fund us for that, or they fund us for that, or that, or that. So I think we want to be ready with our list, that's all. Thanks.
Just one question. With that, with the funding for early childhood development, you said that there's lots of FCM and everybody there advocating. Have you heard anything of whether that there'll be funding available, or have you got wind of potential for anything?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This afternoon, when we sit with the GMP Committee, our program manager for the Childcare Center, Bernice Taylor, will be presenting some other information about what is currently happening within the advocacy role. Dr. Christopher Smith, of course, whom Council is, is aware of, is one of the strongest advocates that we have for a national childcare program. Our Alberta Association of Childcare, our Canadian Associations, there are numerous bodies advocating for a national childcare program. We've been part and parcel of the Alberta scene as well. This council, certainly this council, has also forwarded a letter to the national, to the federal government advocating for national childcare. We have not heard anything further. We're hoping towards the end of this year that an announcement will be made, but there's nothing in the wind that we've been able to peg on.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Someone had asked me about the pump track in terms of, of the grass portion, that why it isn't actually just cement. They said that leaving it grass eventually over time will allow wear and tear of the, the hills and the nodes, which will change the underneath, the actual track part, and that they have never seen one that has grass on it, that it, the track is asphalt, but then they fill it in with cement so that the, the base doesn't change. I said I would ask. Ask for an ask.
In the proposals that we had with the three basic companies across North America that do these pump tracks, very few would have the concrete fill-in. To suggest that somebody said that they don't see grass normally, not too sure, because certainly the majority that I have seen have grass growing on the non-track surfaces. Will it get activity? Yes, it will, but for safety's sake, the recommendation from the signage is to stay on the track because there is an outline of the way that you are supposed to follow the track. Yes, there will be some wear and tear. We see that at the skate park in terms of the wear and tear, where some of the kids will congregate before going on the skate park track, but I would have to say that if they're looking at concrete, one would be, oh, that's a hard landing, and two would be, that would be very expensive.
Amelia?
Yeah, so the throne speech, government mentioned about funding for homelessness and power to reduction. I think there's billion dollars allocated. Just wondering if we have any information regarding that as well?
Thank you, Councilor Gammann. Yes, we are aware of that, the funding program, and I know that, again, too, we're having some discussion this afternoon about some of the issues surrounding homelessness and the approach that we might be taking a look at for our own community. Our FCSS program manager will be part of the GMP agenda where we can talk about it a bit further. Thank you.
Corey?
Thank you. One thing I've noticed is since we started the pump track, once people realized what it was and realized it was going to be an asset to our community, I've had more and more people commenting on all the things we have. We have these new parks popping around town. We have the outdoor rink, we have an awesome skateboard park, the pump park, we've got trails that are going to be interconnected all the way around town, and some of these features, and even, you know, we have disc golf out of town, and I know that there was some thoughts of putting in Ivantow Park, and I hear more and more people want to play disc golf, and you've got the pickleball courts. We've got a lot of really cool things that we don't really showcase too well. And I was wondering, somebody actually said to me, because they were trying to get somebody to move here, and they actually took him for a run, went around, just kind of showed things, like, is there almost like a cartoon depiction that we could do of our community and show the trails and show where everything is just to show how awesome our community really is? I know, and it just kind of brings me to the point, like, now we have the pump park, we've got our mosquito diamond, that little sitting area that we have in West Valley Park. I was out having a barbecue with my family the one day, and there's people that drive from Beaumont to come because they just love having a fire and having a sandwich and sitting in that area. They said, this is such a great spot, so they drove out from Beaumont to come sit in our park. I was like, sometimes we just don't think about what we have within our community, and, and it was just a thought. You had been talking about a bouldering wall, which I still think is really cool because there's a lot of people getting into that, and we're trying to do innovative stuff. What are your thoughts about, instead of having that in Discovery Park where there might be some sightline issues, putting that over in West Valley Park? Just wanted to get your thoughts.
Thank you, Councilor Peebles. Well, yeah, this is my new exciting idea, and it's going to be talked about, I'll be presenting it with the budget discussion, but I was speaking to a number of people about a bouldering park, and I've done a fair amount of research in places that have had the boulders. City of, a city of Calgary has a huge one in, I think it's called McMahon Park. And so I asked about the usage of the park in terms of how well is it being received within the community, and the boulders themselves are not getting a lot of traction. But what is getting traction are the walls, the outdoor walls. And I went to our IPD team, and I just asked, what's the possibility of attaching a bouldering wall in terms of a traverse wall onto the one flat side of the new aquatic facility? Because the structure's already there, and it would take nothing to just simply add the necessary supports for that to actually host that. And turns out that there are two bouldering enthusiasts on the IPD team, and everybody so far is saying, yes, that's very possible. So it has been done before, it's not new, it has been done before, where you're actually taking a look at a traverse wall along the horizontal axis of the one side of the facility, the side that would not be added to down the road. And so that is one of the possibilities for bouldering park within the Lions West Valley Park. That would add to the attraction of that center as that hub for recreation, because not only would you have a new aquatic center, but between the baseball diamonds, between the pump park, and then, of course, a bouldering wall on the outside is a free access in addition to our wonderful omnoplex, becomes a center of attraction for a number of different people.
You were in the hot seat today, lots of questions.
I am in the hot seat.
Do you want to add on to that? Go ahead, I'll let you. Carol?
So we were talking sustainability yesterday and going that one step further and talking about like the art pieces in the community and how to make things fun as well as useful, and we were saying, what if it could be a bouldering wall that shaped like a fish swimming away from a shark chased by an octopus? Kind of thing, right? Where it's like creative and themed, but still very functional. Two in one, so, we're with you.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate the comment, Councilor Willoughby, because one of the things that we should be looking at is how do we incorporate art within our recreation facilities? And that's part of that, you know, architectural design as well, too, that Council has asked us to make sure that we address in terms of the outward look of the, the facility, which is added partly to the cost. But also in terms of how creative can we be within, side or outside the facility to add art to it? Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Be prepared, we invite you to our next sustainability meeting, so we'll be throwing some, some artful ideas at you. So come prepared.
We are going to have a bouldering wall and an indoor playground and all of that in there, right?
Okay, put that to 2 million of additional costs.
I know, the price just keeps going up, right? Are there any other questions for Annette? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to CAO Administration, Winston?
May I just have a slight interjection before I speak, Council? I would like Tom Tarnison, who is in our audience, just to give us an update on the fire, and then we'll have it followed by Merlin, and then I will just wrap it up.
Okay, sure. Tom, come on up.
Good morning. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Councilor, for giving me a few minutes of your time. I thought it was pertinent to bring forward fire prevention, as the month of October is Fire Prevention Month for the fire service. Actually, Fire Prevention Week is October 4th through the 10th, and the theme this year is serve up fire safety in the kitchen, so they're focusing on kitchen safety for this year's theme. In terms of our campaign and our programs, obviously, they've been severely limited as, as everyone is facing the same challenges with COVID-19, so are we. We do, however, have some programs that I'll just share with Council so that you are aware of what, of what we're doing. We are continuing with a, a small program in our schools. We're going to be presenting a fire escape plan program, and we're going to focus on the grade four to six level, where kids are going to be able to create a fire escape plan and then email it or send it in to us, and they will be able to receive a, a dairy treat. So that will be something that we're looking forward to, to doing. Again, obviously, with COVID, we will be following the school's COVID protocols and make sure that we're safe in our presentations. We're also going to be spending time with grade ones this year, doing a fire detector program, so kids that age learn about fire detectors and how they work, and of course, what happens when it goes off and what to do and how to get out, out of the home safely. So we will be doing that presentation as well with the grade one students. In terms of some other activities and programs, obviously, we are not allowed to have the large open houses that we normally have where we have 500, 600 people show up, we're not, that is out of the question this year, unfortunately, but we do, we are continuing on with some of the other programs. Our chimney sweep program is going on this week, and currently, we have 34 homes booked in the program, which is four full days that our chimney sweeps will be out here cleaning chimneys and fireplaces for people. We also are doing, and I've brought this forward with Council before, we're continuing on with our virtual fire tours of the fire service. Unfortunately, our filmographer had a baby right in the middle, so it kind of, kind of threw everything into a bit of a cog, but we are kind of back on track again, and we're going to get that program up and running, and we're going to present little video clips of the fire service, or the first one is on the fire halls, and he's able to, he has a drone that he's able to fly over the fire stations, and actually, it almost looks like you're flying right through the, the building, which is pretty, pretty cool, and kids, I think, once they see it, will be pretty, pretty amazed at, at the, the work that has gone into that. So we're going to be doing that, and then we're going to have another video where we're going to be meeting our firefighters, our local volunteer staff, who we will be filming, doing their regular day job, and then they will be coming to the fire hall. So kids will actually be able to see that mom and dad are able to be firefighters, even though they have a regular job somewhere else. We're going to then talk about the equipment. Council has blessed us with some amazing equipment over the years, and so we want to highlight that and showcase that to our public, so the public is aware that we have state-of-the-art equipment and we're able to respond to any kind of a situation. And then we're going to follow that up with a fire prevention video clip, so those are all coming, so stay tuned, we'll, we'll be presenting those to Council as they, as they come out. Another component that we are working on is, as was mentioned in the last quarterly report, was the random gas, or sorry, the radon gas program. Obviously, COVID has kind of thrown a, a cog in the wheel on that one, too, but we are going to do more of an online-type program where individuals can learn about radon gas, how it's formed, how it can form inside the home, the can, the causes that it can have to the human population, and testing kits and how you get those and, and how, where you send them to. So we're going to do a bit of an, an information campaign through a, a video clip so that people can go online and they can access that and see it. So we're going to be working on that as well. One of the other things that I tasked my staff this year to do was to come up with some other things to directly assist the, our, our community in, as we, as we struggle through our, our COVID pandemic. One of the things that they, they brought forward was called Random Acts of Kindness Days, where the fire service is going to target different organizations or different businesses or different groups in our community and help them out, not necessarily monetary help, but help them, for example, down at the food bank, going down and spending, taking some volunteers down there and, and saying to those folks, you know, you're doing a great job, take the day off, my staff will look after it, and we'll, we'll, we'll sort the groceries and we'll, we'll do all that for you. Or going into a school where you have a teacher that has 40 kids in the class and she's struggling or he's struggling with COVID and all the strains and stresses, saying, you know what, take the lunch hour off, we're going to supervise your class. So we're going to target different, different places, different communities, just to help out. It's not a big thing, but at the end of the day, it can, can put a smile on someone's face, and so that's what our purpose is for, for this year. And that concludes my report. If Council has any questions.
Wonderful, thank you very much for that. Well, it's kind of funny that it's Fire Prevention Month and serve up fire safety in the kitchen. I almost had to call you. I went to self-clean my oven, and it lit on fire, and it was locked, and it was like, there was like big flames, and I'm screaming, Jay, Jay! My husband comes running, and so I quickly shut off. We had to wait to see if the fire, because you couldn't open it, extinguish, and I'm like, what the heck do you do? So note to self, don't always trust the self-cleaning oven.
Good thing you didn't open it.
Yeah.
We may have been visiting your place.
I know. Any questions, Bill?
Thanks for your report, Tom. Is your complement up to where you need it to be?
We have, it's funny, we just went through a process. We did another recruitment program this fall. We've recruited another five members, so that brings us up to a pretty good number. We are still down in numbers a little bit, but we weren't, we're not at a critical point that we were at last, last spring when we were really in desperate straits. So we are maintaining, maintaining our numbers, which is, I'm happy to see.
Great, perfect. Well, thank you very much for that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Merlin? Come on down. Good morning.
Good, Council. On the safety side... Sorry, on the safety side, things are going well. We have not had any real significant increase in incidents and that. We did have one over the weekend at the water plant, but they've got all sorts of, it was a break-in, so they've got all sorts of mechanisms in place and controls in place. We are in the middle of our core audit, and it's a recertification audit, so that's going on this week. A little bit different than usual. Typically, it's five days, and there's visits and inspections and interviews, and because of COVID, there's just a document review. So Sean has been very busy sending information. We did provide the auditor with access to our Safety Sync program, which has all the forms and reports on there, so it's quite, it has reduced the amount of paper that we have to do. So that should be finished up this week, and it usually takes two, three weeks for an initial report on how we did, but we feel quite comfortable that everything will be good. And not just business as usual, lots of training going on. There was, with the start of COVID, most of the training classes were shut down, and it took a while for them to come up with videos and webinars and that. And some of them are still in class. However, the numbers have been reduced, so we're keeping up and making sure that everybody has the right certifications.
Perfect.
That's it.
Thank you for that. Any questions? No? You're off easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, over to you, Winston.
Yes, so thank you, Council. Just a quick update on capital projects. We're coming towards the end of the season, and we're also coming towards the end of our projects successfully, a 99.9% chance that everything else will be sealed up and substantially complete. Substantially complete literally means that we can now use it, it's fit for purpose. There may be some minor things that we'll have to carry through, such as landscaping or reshaping of a ditch or something like that in the early spring. Eighteenth Avenue, as you're well aware, we paved the half-segment last week, the portion that's adjoining the county, and we're working towards, coming towards 50th by early next week. We had a bit of a delay, as I mentioned, last week with some real soft subgrade, which we had to go down and stabilize and re-import a few, a bit of material, but it didn't impact, actually, it improved the structure itself going forward. 62nd, that is also the adjoining road with the county, which we call, I think we call it Range Road 75. That has been completed, just finishing up the ditch profiling as we speak. Two Fordis poles have to be moved, just to make sure it's safe sightlines, but that's not going to hold up the completion. So we already substantially complete there as well. That road is open. As I was talking to Moulton this morning, we are going to try and line it up with the county's paving program. And normally, when you do the gravel completion, and you leave it for a year or two to kind of find its settlement status, and then we'll pave it after that. So that will be coming forward, not for 2021, but likely 2022, depends on the county as well, so we can maximize economic scales, one pave, one road at no-stop starts. In terms of Sunrise Pond, we are pretty much ready for a soft opening, as Council has invited this afternoon for 2:30. And we look forward to have a few residents there as well, just to kind of celebrate the occasion. Patching has gone very well, and resurfacing of some of our roads. I know that the question probably on the lips of Council, when are we going to put some lines down where we lost them? That we're going to do it internally. We do have the equipment, Owen is just waiting for the paint to arrive, and then we will be doing that before the snow flies. Based on my look at the weather report, it seems like we probably have some intermittent rains coming, but still, the temperatures are dipping to about 10, maybe single digits here in the next week and a half. So we're getting close to having to get ourselves buttoned up here, but we'll make it. Sidewalks going pretty well as well. We had, we're doing some extra work and some where we haven't had it on the program, was a kind of, we had tie over from staff that's no longer with us, there's a couple of things we missed there, but that's being improvised upon as we speak. Overall, I think we've done pretty well with the capital in terms of patching and all the other stuff I've mentioned. We are also looking at winter preparations, winter preparations in terms of snow removal. I had about three or four conversations right now with Owen in terms of how that's going to work, and I know Council would like to know the process that we're going to follow. So Owen and myself will be doing a presentation to Council very soon here to give you a little bit of an overview as to how we see the town being cleared as we get our first bit of snow falling beyond. Landfall, just a bit of update, I met with Aaron twice, this is the biomass gentleman. I'm waiting for him to come back with his ideas so that we can see where we're going to go in the new year, hopefully before the end of this year. As somebody said to me, hold on, it's only 86 days until 2021 comes, so the clock is ticking. That being said, we're also looking, GFL has come up with some ideas, which Caleb is working on, and I see maybe synergies to improve the way we're going to run that landfall. I will bring back to Council at the next GMP, the ALT opportunity, remember the one at Fort MacDade? I've had quite a bit of talks with that gentleman, but I will give Council a full update on that one, and we may be gaining some success, maybe not to go with that opportunity based on GFL and Aaron St. Louis coming up with us, so fingers crossed, but I will get back to you in the next week or two. Just a reminder, we will be having a Q3 meeting, that's an evening meeting, where Council will get a fuller update, that will have a fuller financial update and things to that effect. We're in the middle of budget preparations, and I know most councilors is maybe going to have a little conversation with finance this week, just to kind of give your inputs if you so desire to do. Other than that, I think we are on a good trajectory when it comes to the operations capital. Just to give Council a little bit my thoughts, as I said to one councillor this morning, I think that what we need to do is we need to look at a planning budget more so on the infrastructure side. And when I say planning, I mean, let's look at what we have, what assets are at the end of their life or need support or that may not require any intervention. So let's get a house in order and do the most important next year, like sidewalks, patching, that will continue line painting. So that's kind of the approach we're taking as we come forward with our budget preparation in early November. But I'd like Council, of course, to give your input to Elvira and her team as she gets her feet into the waters with the budget that's upcoming. I'm happy to say that we did apply for the MSP, the Municipal Stimulus Program, which should be hours away from hearing, but I mean, we know that we're going to get 862,000, and we'll use that to continue some of the works, the important works we're doing. Finally, just on the, and this is more economic development, but just as an idea, update, my last visit was with the Town of Lamont in terms of intermunicipal collaboration. And again, it went very well, to the point that they would like to our assistance in the area of economic development and what we've done. So we're very pleased to help them planning as well. Jason Tran was with me at that meeting on Friday. And so right now, just to give you an update, we have Hinton, Edson, not Honaway, Mayethob, and Rocky Mountain and Lamont as five municipalities that, and I think we'll, not, I don't use the word cut off, but we want to focus on that as our key, almost like a pilot, and then get the success out of there as we move forward over the next 12 months at least, as I call it. And then, at the same time, I've been very, working closely with the MLA, shared with him some correspondence that I drafted to go to the Minister of Municipal Affairs with his idea and concept, so that we can get her input and her, I wouldn't say blessing, but at least show her what we are pursuing and whether she has any input to that at this point in time. What I do like about what we're doing, even though it's stretching us thin, because it takes time to visit, it takes time to work with people, and eventually, you know, get some revenues out of this, this is really the bottom line. But it's really healing that we're learning a lot from other municipalities as well to see best practice, not just us going out there to help them, but what are we learning from them, where can they help us as well? So there's been some good nuggets that I got out of that personally. So that being said, we, I know that Edson is probably going to be our first assignment. We sent them a proposal, we sent them all the areas where we can assist, and I think we're literally days away because they've got a deadline by the end of the, on some of their planning requirements. And so that will be a chargeable sort of effort from our end, so we should see revenues coming on that end as well. So with that, I'm open to questions, Council, and if you have any clarity you need from me right now.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Oh, we look like a tired bunch. We're... No, it looks like you're getting off easy, too. Well, thank you very much for that. We'll move on to Council reports. And Corey, you're up first.
All right, thank you. September 22nd, I had the privilege of attending, just as a random passerbyer with kids, I was trying to keep away from the water, North U pond, the lantern lunch, and you guys did a really great job, so hats off to the Sustainability Committee. That was a lot of fun, and it was great to see so many people down by that pond, like it was just, it was great, so great job, guys. On September 23rd, Council Ballas and I met with the Curling Club, just to talk about some innovative ideas and different things we can do with the Curling Club. They're working very hard to build their junior program, and just excited about some of the possibilities going forward with the Curling Club and with that area. And October 6th, which is yesterday, we had Alberta Hemp Alliance Directors Meeting. We had Lori Jo Graham on the call, we finished our strategic plan, and now we're going to build the membership and work at getting some money from the province and the feds. There's a lot of different grants available, they're liking what we're doing, so things are looking promising for hemp in Alberta, so. Other than that, my little sister is going to have a baby boy today. She spoke to him for a C-section this morning, so I'm waiting to hear the good news. Woo-hoo.
Very exciting, fantastic. Thank you for that. Amila?
Thank you. Had a few education meetings during the month. On 22nd, I attended the viable discussion with the representative from Ministry of Municipal Affairs and discussed about what options are available of restructuring and defining governance model for the community. In the evening, I attended the event put on by the Sustainability Committee to raise the awareness of importance of proper stormwater handling. It was a successful event and very well-attended. Kudos to the Sustainability Committee. 23rd, I attended the meeting with Wildrose School Division and RCMP to discuss about recent safety concerns. 24th and 25th, I attended the virtual AUMA. On 24th, had a teleconference call with Minister of Infrastructure, discussed about available new funding and some concerns with communications with the department. Also discussed about available federal funding for homelessness and poverty reduction. On the 4th, attended the pump track opening. Excellent to see that how much it has been used even before the opening. I'm sure this will be another great addition to our recreational opportunities and attractions in our community. Monday, the 5th, attended the town hall meeting of Transportation Minister and multicultural, and in the evening, had Multicultural Association Board meeting, first face-to-face meeting after a while. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing of import right at this moment is the Brazu Seniors Foundation. We are already in conversation with Matt and the planning team and looking at the park in behind and the parking lot, if there's any possibility of putting that together for next year's budget. It really is about, going to be about safety and opening up that, the lines of sight in that park, I think, which are, I think it's pretty important, and I think important for us if we look at that to be lands, and it's time for us to, I think, as Mr. Russo has said, that this year may be the planning stages, so that's the one thing that's on my mind at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Carol?
Thank you. My last couple of weeks have actually been busy with AUMA stuff. We had our last board meeting, which there's still a lot of discussion around the policing framework and how that's going to look like and how it's going to be continued on. We have members sitting on, from AUMA and RMA on a board, that's looking at how to develop the long-term board structure, that they won't be on it forever, it'll be more community members, but, so they've been working a lot on that. And then, as well as the convention, that, yeah, it went over very well, I think, for being a virtual convention. Had a great chance to talk with Minister Schultz, and she's for Child Services, so just talking about the $25 daycare and the value and how they see the program changing, and they are talking about changing it, but still doing some kind of continuation, so I think it'll be worth doing a follow-up meeting with her to take our experts in that we have from our ECDC and discuss what we see as really valuable to make sure those are highlighted. She was looking for solutions and ideas, so very open to the conversation. And then, as well, for AUMA, I sat on a viability review for Manning, the Town of Manning, and as they come in, all kinds of smaller communities and larger ones that are doing viability reviews, it goes to the province, and then they have representatives that kind of sit to give guidance or advice from the town, the county, different perspectives. And I think we've been seeing a lot of places where people magically think that if they dissolve, that everything's just going to be better and fixed, which it won't be. And also, in terms of, before, there's a fairly large number of counties that are well-off, and there's some that are not, but if you're really looking at a town that's not viable because of its assets any longer and having to replace, and so many of our towns all started off growing, 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 and then some of them are shrinking, and they literally can't afford what they've already built, let alone anything new. But what if the county gets into the same predicament, right? And that we're really not able to solve these problems just necessarily by merging two people together magically, that we're going to have to rethink how we do communities and what that means. And so it was good. Overall, it was a lot of, a lot of thinking about bigger picture stuff, which I always appreciate, but yeah. And then our lanterns on the lake, which was wonderful, and we had our committee review and said we thought it was successful, and we'd like to do it again and improve and make it even bigger, and that really, I think, part of it, people loved is because it was outside. Whether there's COVID or not, people love being outside when there's stuff going on and they're happy and it's fun, and so I think it showed us that there's a possibility to do more outside, outside stuff in the future, so that's it.
Thank you for that. Bill?
Thank you. On the 23rd, with Corey, we met with the Curling Club, and I'm pleased to announce that they're now looking at doing a seniors program during the noon hour. Wasn't my idea. But anyway, they are becoming innovative and looking at how they can increase, and I think it's an excellent program for the seniors, it's, you know, they can go down there and have a lunch and a four-end game and just a way to get together, and I think it's a great idea. Then in the afternoon, we met with the Wildrose School Division and the RCMP. 24th and 25th, attended the virtual AUMA, which was interesting. 29th, met with the MLA. On the 30th, GMP, Government. And then on the 4th, attended the grand opening of the pump track, and I was actually surprised with the weather conditions, how many people came out there and how anxious the kids were to use that track, so it's certainly going to be interesting. On the 26th, we had the Alberta Hemp Alliance meeting, and then yesterday, well, this is not part of the Council, but anyway, the Great Valley Thunder met with the AGHL. We formed a committee, and we're going to submit to the AGHL to have the showcase game here, which would be a four-day event, attracts, well, you've got 16 teams, you've got about 150 scouts that come from all over the place. You need about 350 to 400 hotel rooms, so there's many, many benefits to doing that, so we're going to be asking the town, of course, to give us a letter of support as well, to, in our bid to do that. And any other help that the town may provide, such as assisting in how to do a bid. And any other help that the town may provide and such as assisting in how to do a bid properly. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. What were the dates of that, Bill?
The date for the, the first period of twenty-twenty-one and October.
Oh wow, fantastic. That'd be. Okay, good. Farrell?
What's the thunder season looking like this year?
Well, that's a good question.
Not to put you on the spot, I did see a post that they were going to have a hundred people allowed?
That's the maximum you can have. Actually, this Friday, there is an exhibition game. And the way they're doing it right now is that they're just opening it up to specific groups and, and so the, on Friday, for example, the, yes, because of the limitation of a hundred people, they're asking that the billets and the players' families be the first people to attend. And then the following year, following game will be the sponsors. And if there's any additional tickets, then it'll be open, but because of the only a hundred people, it's very difficult. And then the, the regular season still is under review.
From the AGHL?
Yeah, these are still just inter-exhibition games.
Well, that is exciting, at least it's still, you know, continuing on somewhat. And are they communicating that out of how they're going to, like, do the tickets, how you said, with families and then sponsors and stuff like that?
On social media.
Oh, perfect. All right, thank you for that. So we'll move to my report. September seventeenth and eighteenth, education meetings. Then, of course, we had lanterns on the pond, like everybody said, it was fantastic. We're looking at building and expanding for next year. And yeah, it was, it was just a beautiful evening and of course, it was the first day of fall, so that's what we said, we have to plan it. We didn't even plan it that way, it just happened, so we have to plan again for next year, the same. Wildrose School Division meeting in regards to safety and crime in our community. I was happy to see the joint letter that went out with the RCMP, the Wildrose School Division and us, so that was really good. AUMA conference online, a little bit different. Definitely missed that, that social aspect of it and getting the chance to talk to other municipalities, what they're doing, how they're feeling, especially during times like this, it would have been really nice to see how people are adapting and, and what kind of changes that everybody's been facing. September twenty-ninth, meeting with Mark Smith and a potential manufacturing opportunity in our community. October first, I had agenda setting and then had an education meeting. And it's really nice to have Tanya on board now. I find that all those little gaps and all those little, you know, things that we're always trying to fill and we have, we have a list a mile long of education needs, so it's really nice because she's really been able to bring a lot of things up to, up to speed and, and touch base with a lot of connections and people that we're really hoping that we could connect to. We have a few open houses coming up in October with Nate and U of A, of course, those will be virtual open houses, so those will be exciting to be piggybacking on. And then, of course, we're going to be having our own open house on October twenty-second, is it October twenty-second or October twentieth? I always get the dates wrong. October twentieth at the CTC, so that'll be really exciting. It'll give, I think, a really good opportunity for the community to know that we're back. We have quite a few institutes, you know, that are behind us, that we've got some wonderful programs and opportunities coming ahead and yeah, partners at the table, so that's really exciting news. So that's great on the education side. October fourth was the pump track ribbon cutting and the official opening, of course, and that was really great. Even the weather was a bit not in our favor, but it was nice because there was a lot of people that came out and it was another thing that we had the opportunity to celebrate in our community, so I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate all the complaining and all the wonderful smiles that we had for our Christmas photo. I'm glad that you all showed up, even in the rain. I really appreciate it. October fifth, meeting with Minister MacGyver, which was nice. He was here for the town hall meeting and then we had an opportunity afterwards to just have a really in-person little chat with him, so it was really nice. And October sixth, we had sustainability meeting and we're looking at changing a few things that we'll be bringing forward, I guess, before the organizational meeting. We're looking at restructuring it a little bit and kind of looking at, at the terms of it and we're just really hoping that, you know, we'll have the administrative support and the council support and we're looking at having also a budgetary item there that we'd want to add to budget, just a small little budget with maybe some fireworks and building docks and a band and I could go on, but yeah, that'll all be coming. And that is the end of my report. I will move along to the information items. Ten point one, Drayton Valley Brazos Recreation Board Meeting Minutes, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Ten point two, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Meeting Minutes, August twenty, August twentieth, twenty-twenty and August stats. Ten point three, Star Catholic School Board Meeting Highlights, September twenty-twenty. And ten point four, Drayton Valley RCMP Stats, August twenty-twenty. And I will adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-one AM and we'll call for a five-minute break before we move into our GMP. What did I forget? Oh, a motion to adopt the information items. They're all in favor and Bill was here too, sorry, guys. And then we'll adjourn the meeting. Yay, and five minutes.